Welcome to Beaumont City Council's special meeting on Wednesday, April 13th. With that, I'm going to go ahead and call this portion of the meeting to order at 5:04. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Here.
Councilmember Knight?
Here.
Councilmember Condon?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Here.
And Mayor Lara?
Here.
See, we're all present. Any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Any conflict of interest for council?
No.
Seeing none, we'll go into... Do we have any public comments for closed session?
No, none.
Okay, so I'm going to open and close public comments at 5:05. And with that, we'll adjourn to closed session at 5:05.
Those items are personnel matters, evaluation of city manager pursuant to government code section 54957B, consideration of appointment, employment of city manager pursuant to government code section 54957B. C, personnel matters, evaluation of city attorney pursuant to government code section 54957B. D, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, possible initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4, one potential case. And E, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1, one case, Western Riverside Council of Governments versus City of Beaumont.
Coming back out of closed session at 6:22 PM. Can we report from our city attorney? Oh, sorry.
The council met in closed session. Item A, personnel matters, evaluation of minimum city manager pursuant to government code section 54957B. No reportable action on that item. Consideration of appointment, employment of city manager pursuant to government code section 54957B. No reportable action. Item C, personnel matters, evaluation of city attorney pursuant to government code section 54957B. No reportable action. Item D, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, possible initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4, one potential case, no reportable action. E, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1, one case, Western Riverside Council of Governments versus City of Beaumont. Case number RIC 536164. Appeal filed, and there was no reportable action on that item. That's the report out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pink. With that, I'll go ahead and call our special meeting regular session to order at 6:24. And with that, can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Roscoe?
Here.
Councilmember Knight?
Here.
Councilmember Condon?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Here.
Mayor Lara?
Here.
Excuse that. Sir. Mayor Pro Tim White, would you please use the mic?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as all.
Thank you. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, Mayor.
We have no conflicts?
I do.
Okay.
I need to recuse myself from the item number 2A because of the... how close I live to the development.
All right, sir. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim White. Do we have any announcements or recognitions?
It's Mr. Stroff.
Sorry? Okay. Public comment period. Any one person may address city council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give it to the city clerk. There are three minute... there is a three-minute time limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. Do we have any...
No, Mayor, we have no speakers.
All right, since we have no request to speak at this time, I'll open and close public comments at 6:25. And that will bring us to section... item two, action items, public hearings, and requests. And Mayor Pro Tim White will... would be to... excuse yourself, sir?
All right.
this is the Fifth Amendment to the tolling agreement with the City of Calamase and CV Communities. You recall from prior discussions with the council that the two parties, Calamase and CV Communities, were negotiating and in discussions to try to come to an agreement in terms of the... what should be provided for in a settlement agreement. And when we put this agenda together, initially, they were still in negotiations, but as of last night, we received confirmation that the City of Calamase did approve the settlement agreement that had been negotiated between the parties. And the concept that has been discussed with the other parties is that once that was completed and they were in agreement and finished their negotiations, we would then have an opportunity to review it from the perspective of the City of Beaumont. So we now have that finalized agreement that was approved by the council. We'll look at it from the perspective of the City of Beaumont. But the statute of limitations is set to expire on the potential sequoia litigation, and it is set to expire on the 15th of this month. So in order to allow us time to review it and then come back to you and advise you, I will say they've kept us up to... up on the status of those negotiations, so we have been receiving the agreements as they've been negotiating, which means we're not starting from scratch. But we'll come back to you at a council meeting and give you our opinion on the proposed settlement agreement. And before we do that, we'll... if we have changes, we'll let the other side know. I believe the city manager of the City of Calamase was given authority to make some level of changes to the agreement. So anyway, that's where we're at. We do need additional time for the city now to have its opportunity to review this. And I would recommend that the city approve the Amendment Number Five to the tolling agreement, which would extend the statute of limitations out, as indicated in the staff report, to June 15, 2016. That should be more than enough time.
Okay.
I move to approve item number...
We have a speaker on this meeting.
Do we have a speaker?
Oh.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for that report. And with that, I'll go ahead and open public comment for item 2A at 6:29.
Mike White?
Thank you. Mike White, CV Communities. Just to... I think your city attorney made a good presentation in terms of status. We're happy that we are finally done, and I think it's a fair agreement, and, you know, we're comfortable with it, or we wouldn't have signed it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any additional speakers?
No further speakers, Mayor.
So with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment at 6:29.
All right.
Go ahead.
I move to approve Amendment Number Five to tolling agreement between CV Communities LLC, the City of Beaumont, and the City of Calamase.
I'll second.
Okay, so motion by Knight, second by Condon to approve. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Oh.
Did you bring him in? He cheered us.
There you go, grab a bite, too. Next story.
See something? Say something. Don't get me started on that one.
Okay, that brings us to item 2B, Economic Development Committee update and approval of committee members.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. At the council meeting on March 15, 2016, council appointed two members to work with staff for the Economic Development Committee and also approved the committee makeup. Since that time, Councilmember Condon, Councilmember Roscoe, and staff contacted individuals to hopefully fulfill those committee seats that were established. We worked pretty hard on this. I want to reach out... or I want to thank Councilmember Condon and Councilmember Roscoe for assisting and providing some leads in some of the areas that I may not have the greatest networking in. So they were a wealth of knowledge when it came down to some of the individuals that would be interested in sitting on this committee. So we went ahead and contacted all of them. Everyone that's on this list, I've personally spoken to and is more than happy to sit on the committee if council approves them. And I don't need to go into all the different names. It's on the agenda, and it was posted on there, but I think we have a pretty diverse mix of the community, business members, education. And one thing I wanted to say is Number 10, which is the rotating member for the appointed expert. I thought that it may be best for the committee itself to try to determine what expert they may feel is the most important, to be that rotating member, once they have their one-year work plan and their goals and visions and the job duties that they want to perform for the city council nailed down. So it could be a different expert depending on where they see the committee moving in the future. So that's why it's blank at this point in time. And then can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to open and close public comment at 6:32.
I'd like to move that we approve. Is that what we're being asked to do here? Approve the committee members as presented.
I've got some questions on this committee, so can I discuss, of course? I'm sorry, it's not really questions for you, but I... when we first brought this up, I thought that... in theory, I thought that this Economic Development Committee would be a good idea. And I looked at the list, a very extensive list, and going back through my experience with the County of Riverside, after the economic development went away, we have... we had a process that we used for developments where during our initial meeting... there would be an initial meeting where you'd have one elected there that would basically request the meeting. You had a representative from EDA, and you had decision makers, primarily department heads in this meeting. And you would cover... one of the prime... the first things that they would ask you to cover is confidentiality because of a business plan, or they didn't want anybody to know what was going on or what their ideas were at the time. The other concerns were processing timeframes for planning, for building, for fire. You know, how long is it going to take you to get your reviews done? What's the cost of that review going to be? Other items that would come up are developer fees. What are developer fees? What can we do to either put developer fees off or maybe create a developer... a DA, a developer agreement? What about my transportation improvements? So, you know, is there fast-tracking to expedite my project? So we would go through and cover those in that initial meeting, and then once that initial meeting is done, we would never see an elected again. It would be worked out with key staff members, maybe an ombudsman that would be a primary point of contact. And they would move forward with those projects at that, you know, until completion. So the concern I have is I... when I look at this, I just... I don't want to create more bureaucracy. The concern I also have is with this many people in the committee, the confidentiality, I don't want to scare developers away. What I think would be maybe a better use is doing this as an ad hoc, and maybe they can create ideas that they would like to bring back to council. Or we have... we direct staff to create ideas for economic development and bring those back to council for their review. Those are my thoughts and concerns in regards to this Economic Development Committee.
Can I ask a question, please? Of Kyle?
Yes, Councilmember Knight. Kyle?
Of Kyle, or Mr. Warsinski?
Yes.
Our mayor hit on a few things that had resonated with me, and that was issues with confidentiality, because I know sometimes with bringing in... this has been an issue before. What is the standard operating within... I think it's not just with our cities, but with other cities, and I know you know that.
Sure.
Could you explain that to me?
Be more than happy to. So when staff meets with potential clients, it's always on the concept that the discussions, until they submit an application, are to be confidential, and that's for multiple reasons. They are typically shopping more than one city at a time in terms of looking for a location. And if we just air their laundry out there on what they're doing, and they know that there's a project or a certain site in the City of Beaumont that they're really interested in, very often, that could negatively affect them in another city, or vice versa. If we knew what they were being offered in another city, we could try to one-up them if the other city was not having a confidential discussion with that developer, with that business. So it's some... it's part of the industry standard that when we're meeting with these people and they're sharing with us some of their personal invoices... not invoices, but personal finances, what their goals are, what properties they're looking at, we try not to explain that until we get an actual application for that business. So oftentimes, you may ask me what business is going in, or you've heard that people are looking at a certain property, and I'm very hesitant to say it out loud, especially during a public meeting, because that property owner may feel, okay, well, staff knows about it, the city council knows about it, all the residents know about it. Now, me as the property owner have a little bit more leverage over this business, and maybe I can leverage all of that public knowledge on increasing their property value. So now, the price for that property may be more because they know that everyone's interested in that business going in, in that location. As it relates to the Economic Development Committee, it is a concern that I've had in terms of that menu of duties and tasks and responsibilities the committee could undertake. When I look at an Economic Development Committee, I'd think it would be better suited to work on marketing materials, work on a campaign or a rebranding of a city, work on like an economic development strategic plan or things like that, and maybe leave some of the business attractions. So do we really want to have 13 people meeting with a potential developer that's coming in? I don't know, because that draws the line on that confidentiality thing, and how many people do we really need to be in that meeting discussing it when you have these corporate people visiting from out of state, or sometimes out of countries, depending on the investment opportunities? So if we focus the committee in the right way, and council has to approve their work plan when it comes forward. If they want to do development review, it could be potentially after the application is submitted. And... but there is a concern, and the mayor had brought that up, which is processing time. So if we create a review of the committee before it goes to the city council-appointed planning commission, then we have another step in the process in which we have to do a design review for that, have a meeting, have them review it, recommend a planning commission, who oftentimes on very large projects makes another recommendation to go to the city council. So it is a concern on processing time, is how fast could we do that and that stuff. So I think the best thing, in my opinion, would be to focus on marketing, branding, possibly look at things and make recommendations on processes or those ideas to the city council, and kind of leave the development attraction and retention efforts to staff and the city council members.
Thank you. That was very helpful. For me, Mr. Mayor, my fellow council members, I would like to see us stick with the industry standard. I think that it has worked. It works, but I'm supportive of this going in a different direction. But I think the industry standard is the way to proceed. I don't want to see us lose things because we're out of... we're different. We're trying not to do that anymore, basically, so.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim White?
When I first thought of a development... Economic Development Committee, it was sort of along the lines of what you were talking about. I think it's important to bring... to engage the community, to help with ideas. How can we bring more business to Beaumont? To also be, you know, to engage them in being recruiters. If you're in a... you know, you're in a restaurant that's in Yucapá, and they're killing business, and you say, hey, why don't you come over to Beaumont and try and open up a store over here? And I think the separation of confidentiality is important, and I think you can continue to do that. I remember early on, when the space that Aldi now occupies came up, and we were asking you, well, what's going in there? What's going in there? And you said, I'm not going to... I don't really want to tell you because I don't want to ruin the deal. And I think that all of these people would understand that. But I think if you look at the entire effort that just went through... that UCR just went through to get that huge commitment from CARB to come in and open an agency there, I was at a RCTC meeting this morning, and it turns out it was all members of the community coming together, all of the leaders coming together in a way to... once, you know, once all the negotiation which is going on behind the scenes, you know, to come in and woo that developer to come here as opposed to another city. I'm not at all thinking that this economic committee would be in the details of things that should be confidential or meeting with corporate until the city staff comes and says, hey, you know, we're bringing them in, let's throw them a party, and, you know, let's bring in the superintendent of schools and someone from the hospital board and all of that. So I think that that's important. And I think we have to remember, it's just like with the finance committee, we don't have a mission yet for this committee, and the committee can bring a mission and a suggestion of what they're going to do and how they're going to operate, and I think council still has an oversight on that. So I think we need to, you know... Councilmember Knight said that wants to see it go in a different direction. Unfortunately, I don't know what direction it's going in yet, because we have... they haven't met yet. They haven't had an opportunity to say, here's what we think we should do. And I think that we can work with the committee to benefit all of us. But so often, you hear from people in the community, oh, I want a movie theater. Oh, I want a Trader Joe's. No, I don't want a Trader Joe's. I don't want, you know, that kind of stuff. And I think that this might help us get some new ideas and a new approach to bringing in business.
Okay. Councilmember Condon?
This community has just gone through a very difficult year, and we've made tremendous progress in setting things right in our fiscal house and with some of the issues that we've dealt with. However, we also have to look at the future, and we have to let the community know that we're about increasing our options for the future. We're looking at clean, smart jobs coming to the city. This is the other half. We can fix what was broken, but we have to have a path for moving forward. What this provides us is a path for moving forward. And I agree that we are not getting into the confidential aspects. We're not getting into the aspects that are rightfully belong to the planning commission and those kinds of issues. It's a way of creating synergy within the community, bringing the community together, and who do you think we are? Who do you think we should be? What kind of smart, clean jobs do you think should come to the city? And those kinds of discussions. And as Mayor Pro Tim White said, this is a journey that we're setting out upon. We do not have the finances to hire an economic development person. And this is a way that we can both involve the community and set a new path for ourselves. I think it's incredibly important to show people that we're interested in moving forward. Also, a number of people that I have talked to in Sacramento are willing to come and be guest speakers to our committee to talk about the economic development situations in the state, and experts that normally would cost us a great deal of money are willing to come and chat with people that are sitting on this committee about economic development and what it's about and what it's like. And so I think we're in a great position to learn a great deal as a city and to move the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. First of all, I want to say...
Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to all my colleagues, because I didn't realize this was going to be such a great discussion where everybody gets to participate and talk about... somebody has... we all have something to say about this. That says that this is a priority for our city, so I want to say thank you, because all of you had a lot of great input and meaning into where this is going to go. I kind of want to just add on, you know, any fears in this. The vision that I have seen this direction, I was hoping it's for it to go, and it was kind of mentioned already, is that's not the purpose of this committee, is to slow down any process. I think the goal here is to find ways how we can streamline, make our city... I want to say, I know it's been used... it's rhetoric, you've heard before, but a business-friendly community that allow... for our community to dictate who we want, like we said, what our committee is going to look like, and who we want in our city. We can't just leave it to staff. I think this is a committee that's way past due, and just to also add, you know, as been mentioned, that, you know, we've been doing certain things a certain way. Well, the facts speak for themselves. We need to do more. We haven't done enough. We got to start thinking outside the box, and, you know... you know, I kind of want to see this get to develop over time, and Councilman White made a good point in saying that we haven't seen what it's going to look like. We've seen the basic concept, and I think this needs getting an opportunity for it to grow, and any time we can, as a council, I'm hoping, we can direct that. And Hoover's here in two, three years, who's serving on the council, can help direct that as well. With the council is direction, and that's what we're up here to do as electeds. But we have to give that opportunity to the community to provide input, and I think does that. It engages our community, so.
Could I make a clarification?
Councilmember... we done?
No. Also, I wanted to introduce one of the community members after you have... the members to the... one of the members here that's present here, Michael McCraw, in the back here, who is one of the potential members, which is a community member, non-business member of the community that I know that he's here. So I just wanted to introduce him as well, so.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes, I would like to make a clarification. I did not say I was against this group. I think it's a good thing for our community. My concern was that we stay out of the confidential aspects, because it can be a detriment. And that is what I was saying. And I know I'm not against this. I think it's a good thing. I think it's wonderful, but to say that... and I don't know what way it's going, but I know what way I don't want it to go. Thank you.
And those are good points.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Real quick, Mr. Pink, this committee, this is a standing committee, correct? Is that where our goal is? So it's a Brown Act committee?
Yeah. The way this committee is comprised, it would be a... it would be, as I understand it, a standing committee, and so it would be a Brown Act body. And I'll just... I'll remind you of the rule on that under the Brown Act, and that is, a legislative body is a governing body, like yourself, of a local agency. It's also a commission. This gets a little bit wordy, but it's a commission, a committee, a board or other body of a local agency, whether permanent or temporary, decision-making or advisory, created by charter, ordinance, resolution, or formal action of the legislative body. So when you create the body by formal action, then it generally is a Brown Act body with some exceptions. And one of the exceptions is where it's an advisory committee that is composed solely of members of the legislative body that are less than a quorum. So for example, if one or two of you were appointed to be a sub... an ad hoc subcommittee for a limited purpose, a limited duration, that would not be a Brown Act body. If it's a minority of the council and it's a standing committee, it's a Brown Act body. If it's a minority of the council and then anybody else on that committee, even if it's members of the public, then it's a Brown Act body. So this would be a Brown Act body. You would... You would notice the meetings under the Brown Act. And so that's the rule.
Okay. I guess my, I guess my suggestion would be is that maybe this become, maybe a little bit smaller of a committee and become an ad hoc committee that has, that provides direction to staff or suggestions. I just, to have another Brown Act committee and then another meeting of a group this size, and, you know, it just seems to be adding more bureaucracy than it is fixing. I mean, Mayor Protem White brought up a good point where you've got people on this committee that can go out to a restaurant, they see something that they like, and they, they talk to somebody or make, try to make a connection. But I think anybody, I mean, I've done that, I know Councilmember White has done that. So to me, it just, I have concerns developing another committee. I prefer an ad hoc committee that would, has a specific purpose, meets, develops the criteria, and then turns that over to staff. Councilmember Condon brought up a good point about having people come in from Sacramento to provide education. To me, that would be better, we'd be better off if our staff was the one that was educated. So we're growing our own people in-house because that's one thing that we're really lacking is enough staff to do this and to hold these type of meetings. So I'd rather have staff be the beneficiary of that education. That's all I have to say.
I'd like to take a motion to approve committee members as presented.
I already made that motion.
Okay, I'll second that motion then. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem White, seconded by Councilmember Roscoe, to approve the committee members as presented. Roll call.
I have one more question.
Councilmember Knight?
Mr. Mayor, given the circumstances and with our staff and issues here with another group, what if this started out as an odd, an odd hack, an ad hoc, and then it eventually moved into a more formal setting? And, no?
Mayor, we already, we already did that. We had an ad hoc committee of Mr. Roscoe and Dr. Condon, and then we approved this committee, I believe. Didn't we approve the committee in the last?
Yes.
And concerns, and concerns and suggestions could have been made at that time when, see, I'm going to have a little concern now because...
Just call for the question now. So we've got a long.
All right, so let's take roll call. Do we have to vote on call for the question, or we just stop debate and go right to the roll call?
It seems like everybody's going to go to the vote. If it was contested, then you'd have to have a vote.
All right, so roll call, Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Protem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
No.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So you have before you a nice 60-page contract from Tyler Technologies in reference to the software replacement enhancement agreement you approved on March 1st. Mr. Pinkney and his firm have vetted the contract, answered a couple of questions that a few members have brought up, and I'm here to answer any additional questions or concerns about the contract before we enter into it. Would you like me to, maybe if I point out a couple of the questions that came up, it'll answer a few questions, if you don't mind. Other wise mayor, do you have anything specific in direction you'd like me to take? Would you like me to cover the things we discussed?
If you want to go ahead and cover those questions in case that maybe answers somebody else's, and then we can take public comment after that.
Understood. Under transaction history, there was a question about five years, reference it being a seven-year contract. It is a longer contract than we normally enter into, but it being a software service agreement, this is a little different. The five years is very specific to the, the data that we are going to pull out of Great Plains and put into Tyler Technologies. So the five years is what we're going to pull out and populate. So we're going to go back five years, put that in Tyler Technologies and move forward. There'll be no limit to Tyler Technologies moving forward. There was talk and question in regards to the fees and would there be any increase to the fees during the seven years? And the answer is no. The fees are stated in Exhibit A. We don't anticipate any changes for the seven years. The only change would be in year eight, will be subject to fee adjustment. Any other changes or terms of the contract would definitely be brought back to council for consideration prior approval. There's some concern about the 30-day failure timeframe. Tyler explained that this only pertains to customer program modifications in the actual software, not the off-the-shelf system as we're getting it. The mayor did recommend, and we are going to look into maybe increasing that to 60 days if we have a concern. Tyler Technologies is something we're familiar with. We're not concerned that the training time is going to be extended, extended any more than as predicted. Right now, it's at $25,000 for, I think, 14 days, four days, four days a year for the term of seven years. But again, staff's familiar with the product. Doesn't seem like there's a huge learning curve to it. Seems pretty simple. Let's see, Ms. Lena Wade talked about a few things as well. She talked, she said the long-term seven-year agreements are characteristic for software services to ensure continuity of service and to take advantage of those long-term discounts. Again, the training, I think that was the gist of the questions that staff received. If there's any other additional, I will be happy to try to answer them. Mr. Pinkney, help me.
Mayor, I have a question.
Thank you. I have just a couple of questions. We have ordinances in place to allow us to operate in an orderly fashion and to make sure that everything is done appropriately. And here we are putting forth, and I, by the way, I'm totally in favor of the contract. This is just a question that has bothered me, that we are violating our own ordinance. And my question is, does the ordinance allow for exceptions? And if it doesn't, are we not setting a bad pattern again of violating our own ordinance when we put a contract into place? And also, because of his extensive experience with computers and software, I would very much like to hear Mr., or Councilmember Protem, sorry, Mayor Protem Lloyd's perceptions on this extended contract, giving the volatility and the changeability of software systems.
That's where I was going to go.
I couldn't get that out.
First, yeah, a couple of questions first, and then I'll give you my, my point of view. What is the ordinance saying now? How many, I mean, on a, on a software contract, yeah, what does the ordinance say now?
This is, my view of this contract is, it's not a professional services contract. It's really, we're licensing the use of their software. And ancillary to that is that they're going to provide support and training. But the gravement of the contract is one for the software. And I had the same concerns when I first looked at it. But in reading it, it's, it's not like we're hiring an engineering firm. And that ordinance is very specific in terms of the length. It can only be a year. You can then renew it, and then it has to come back to you. And then you can renew it or extend it. And this would be a seven-year contract. But again, it's not, I don't believe that it falls under that ordinance because it's really not professional services as much as it is, you know, a software contract.
Okay. And in your staff report here, I believe you say that it's a longer term than what we approved. What did we approve? What term did we approve?
No, it's not a longer term. She just references the city ordinance, but like as John pointed out, they were comparing it to the professional services agreements. And we have now agreed that this is not a professional services agreement. This is separate. So this is not bound by the ordinance.
I think it's different than what you've been seeing come before you because what you've been seeing come before this council have been professional service agreements. And we've had, in every one of those, we've had a one-year limit, and then it has to come back to you for renewal or extension. So you're involved, it doesn't fall under the radar, and you forget about it, and it's 20 years later. But this really isn't, in my view, under that category. This is a different type.
So I understand the savings is greater at seven years. Is it that much greater than four years or five years? Or were there tiers that we're looking at?
In the contract, in the pricing?
Yeah. And while you're looking that up, I believe I saw a clause in it, I can't find it right now.
Page eight.
There's only, I don't know how many pages here.
Page eight.
I know, there's...
Is it page 18?
Eight.
Eight?
Eight.
What am I asking about?
Term, cancellation?
Yes.
The cancellation section.
Very good. I know where you're going with it.
So it basically says, once we're all set up, if we don't like it, we can cancel it. And there's no, there's no cost to us.
That's correct.
In the last 30 minutes of my work today, we were actually discussing government contracts. And it's unlikely, and point of clarification, I don't work with any contracts at ESR. It was regarding sales reporting of different government, sales results. And it came up that most governments do not have a two, three, four-year contract. They usually have a one- or two-year contract with an option year that continues every year. It's an option year that you can keep bringing up. So I just, you know, I wonder if that cancellation clause is only good right after we set up, or is it good a year and a half or two years down the line? I mean, can we get out of this contract in a year and a half or two years if we're not comfortable with the service we've been provided?
And it's my understanding in discussions with Milana and previously Onyx when this started, that could be canceled at any point in time during the seven-year term.
Okay.
I will defer to Mr. Pinkney to confirm that.
And I believe earlier when we discussed this, you'd already talked about how it's an annual maintenance and it's, it's hosted in the software as a service.
So if we give them enough notice, we just don't pay our annual maintenance contract, and we move on to another vendor, or we go as-is with no support. Those are your options. A lot of cities will do that. They'll enter into short-term contracts and then not renew. But then you run into the instance that we're at now, where your system's outdated, unsupported. This ensures that we stay current, that we stay up to date with releases and patches, security patches, things of that.
And I think that's the only penalty, is that when you, when you don't renew your contract...
You don't do it, you don't get those.
Yeah, and they pass you by, and your, your data becomes hard to get to. So, so I'm good with this.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Oh, it was, it was kind of, I asked already on the termination date, I mean, if we terminate, we can still have to continue to pay, right?
If you don't give proper notice.
Yeah, the term, yeah, and the termination, it says, client will, for all, we'll still have to pay for all the fees and expenses related to the software products.
Correct.
So we would have to pay for the seven years out?
We would have, not for the, there's the maintenance portion of it, and then there's the software costs. So you wouldn't have to pay your ongoing maintenance costs, but you still have to pay for the software because you're in possession of it, yes. So it's, it's a...
That's, that's not clarified in the contract. It doesn't say, you know...
Where it breaks out, let me find the exhibit. This first section isn't numbered, and I asked them...
Because I try to distinguish the two. Usually they distinguish between the software itself, rights, and then the maintenance of it usually is too separate.
The standard software contract that I've seen shows that you buy the software upfront the first year.
Yes.
And usually when you buy the software the first year, that, that cost includes one-year maintenance. And then every year, you're sent a bill to renew your maintenance. And if you don't renew it, at least with our company, if you don't renew the maintenance, we just don't help you anymore. And if two or three years later, you come back and say, I want to renew the maintenance, then we usually work in arrangement where we'll give you a year or two years to get you caught up. And then you might have to pay for more software. But after the original software cost, there isn't any after that.
If you look at Exhibit, it's Exhibit A, Schedule III, and it talks about professional services and hardware. So you're talking about your implementation.
What page is that?
Good question. Because it's not, it's the first section, which isn't numbered.
Exhibit A?
Exhibit A, Schedule III.
Or Attachment A.
And so there's professional services and hardware, and then there's your subscription.
Which 20?
So all you're doing annually is your, after your year-one cost, your subscription is your length of the agreement, the seven years or 84 months, annual subscription fee of $51,289 with annual user fees of $17,280. So that's what you would be walking away from if you canceled it after your year's service.
Professional services. Okay, so I see the breakdown.
Yeah.
Is that, is that worded in the contract, though? Is it worded anywhere in the contract?
Yes, it references Exhibit A in your pricing and your summary agreement. Everything refers to Exhibit A.
I'm sorry. Okay, here we go. Okay.
Under 22 contract documents, it says the agreement includes the following exhibits. Exhibit A, the investment summary, and it says Schedule I, II, and III. Again, I apologize. One, two, three, four.
It's page 13.
Yes, thank you. It references all the documents. So those are...
Including the exhibits, okay.
And then your invoicing, invoicing and payment policy. So the way I understand this, and I'll let John confirm, but as the contract relates to these exhibits, this is what it's referencing, and this is what we're agreeing for payment.
The, the contract also provides at Section F, it addresses term and termination. And that's where it sets forth, under Section F1, this contract has a seven-year term, and it would renew automatically for an additional one-year term, renewals, unless either party terminates in writing 60 days prior to the end of that renewal term. But then it goes on, then it discusses termination. And it says the agreement can be terminated, and then it lists the reasons it can be terminated. One is, we pay, we fail to pay our fees. And then it goes on to say for cause, that they breached the contract, they're not providing the service that we contracted for, force majeure, which is an unexpected event that impedes a party's ability to perform. And then the last one, 2.4, is lack of appropriations. If the client, the city, should not appropriate or otherwise make available funds sufficient to utilize the SaaS services, client may unilaterally terminate this agreement upon 30 days' written notice to Tyler. Client will not be entitled to a refund or offset of previously paid but unused SaaS fees. Client agrees not to use termination for lack of appropriation as a substitute for termination for convenience. So you can't afford it anymore, or they breach the contract, then, you know, there are some clauses here that protect you.
Okay.
But it, it doesn't contain a clause under the termination section that just allows you to just unilaterally, for no reason at all, decide that you want to end the contract.
And again, what I learned today was that they, most company, most governments don't do that because every budget has to be approved every year. And if an item gets pulled out of a budget, then there's no appropriations for that item. And, and there is no recourse for the software company really to come back and say, force a city or a county to continue.
I don't know, and I don't know if Kerry does know what the position of the company is with regard to a shorter-term contract, you know, whether they would negotiate it to a shorter term or, I mean, usually these companies give you a contract, and that's the contract. But if the council would like us to go back and, and make an inquiry and then report back to you, we can do that.
Good. We, well, but the price is based on a seven-year contract, not a shorter term, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
But in our case, again, I'm only speaking from the company I work for, we're always going back and forth and getting it to a cost that the customer is willing to accept. So I, you know, it would be nice to know what, what four years and what seven years the difference would be.
Okay. I know it was negotiate, it was, the previous finance director negotiated this, and this was the best contract for the money provided in the timeframe that we could get with the first annual cost being something that we can afford. I can reach out to her and try to get those documents from the initial onset of this contract negotiations, if you will. But she started it in the beginning.
Mayor, may I make a suggestion so that we don't have to bring this back?
Yeah.
And my suggestion would be that we approve it on, on the idea of if getting a better cost raises our initial cost, that we give the staff the authorization to, to accept this. Because if, if what you're saying is true, we don't want the initial cost to go up. And again, I think it's pretty lenient on how we can get out of it if we need to. But that way, you don't have to go back, see the numbers, and then come back in two weeks from now and tell us again.
Thank you.
And the other concern, too, this is going to be a permitting software as well.
Correct.
And to do, at least, from my experience with the County Riverside, to start up permitting software for four years and then to stop it is... to start up permitting software for four years and then to stop it is a lot of work for staff.
That's true.
And this is out of the box. We're not doing any modifications, correct?
No modifications. Nope. Off the shelf.
Thank you for addressing that concern. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract and ask staff to see if there's better terms on the condition that if it raises our initial cost, that they have the authorization to go ahead and sign the seven-year contract.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by White, second by Roscoe, to approve with modifications. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton White?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Aye.
That motion carries, and that brings us to 2D, approval of weed abatement contracts.
Good evening, mayor and council. It is that time of year again for weed abatement. So what you have before you is five contracts from contractors that were contacted by the city that would like to do weed abatement services for the city. Weed abatement is authorized under Title VIII, Section 8.08 of the Beaumont Municipal Code. So I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any, or...
This is consistent with what we did last year, correct?
Yes, same format, everything, just brought it back with them. I think we have one new contractor this year that we didn't have last year.
I don't have questions. Anybody on council question?
Most of these have been...
Mayor Roscoe?
Thank you. Most of them have been used previous year, right?
Yeah, all but one has, or actually, two of them. Two of them are new this year from last year, but it's kind of nice to have a little bit of selection.
And then the usual process is you would just give them out the work based on how?
What we do is, when we contact the contractors, we figure out what equipment they have and what their services that they provide. There are some contractors that have the large equipment, the disking and the mowers to do the larger parcels. Then there are also some that just want to do smaller lots and do the handwork. So based on what they're available to do, we send out the notices to the property owners telling them that it's time for weed abatement. They can either be part of the subscription program, which the city provides, or they can take care of the weed abatement on their own. If they are in our subscription program, the contractors are assigned out based on what they're available to do. And we also try to group them based on area. The larger parcels require them to tractor in their tractors and their equipment. So we try to group one contractor with a couple of parcels that are very close to each other so they're not having to drive crisscross across the city. So that's pretty much how it's assigned, and we sort of go down the list based on who's available and what parcels they can take care of, so...
That's good. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
None, mayor.
Open and close public comment at 7:14. Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept item 2D.
I'll second that.
Motion by Condon, second by Knight, to approve the contracts for weed abatement. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton White?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Aye.
Motion carries, brings us to item 2F, Contractor Award, oh, excuse me, 2E, City Attorney invoices for March 2016.
I'm going to recuse myself on this item since it affects my law firm.
Mayor and council, you have the city attorney's invoices for the month ending March 31st, 2016, in the amount of sixty-three thousand, six-hundred seventy-six dollars and twelve cents.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
None on this one, mayor.
Okay. I open and close public comment at 7:16 on this item. Any comments from council? Have a motion?
I move to approve the invoices.
I'll second that.
Your motion by Knight, second by White, to approve the invoices. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton White?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Aye.
That motion carries, brings us to item 2F, Contract Award, Pyro Spectaculars, Inc.
At the last council meeting, there was consensus that the city retained Pyro Spectaculars to perform a fireworks show. So staff went ahead and contacted them for their draft contract. The city attorney has not reviewed this contract. And with approval from council, we will need to issue a PO to retain our space on the Fourth of July with this company, because they are very busy one day a year. And we want to make sure that we get our name in the queue. So if council approves this tonight, we will issue the PO. However, the contract negotiations will begin. They should be limited, since truly, they're a sole-source provider. And if we disagree with the contract negotiations, then they have a monopoly.
Do we have any speakers on this item? No speakers on this item. I'll open and close public comment on this item at 7:18.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had a lot of positive feedback from the community. The word went out real fast, and I see excitement, and it was really nice. People are paying attention, and families with families and, you know, so that's a good thing. That's all.
Well, thank you. I'm going to wait. Do we have anybody else?
Sure.
Mayor Proton White?
I have also heard a lot of positive response. I have had a couple of emails from people who were concerned that a financially strapped city is going to be spending twelve thousand dollars on fireworks and some of the other issues that we talked about. And I would like to get a little more detail from Mr. Sherwood here. But I want to start by saying that, you know, I believe that this is a cost that is well worth what we're looking at here. Because we have put the, the community has been through a lot in the last year. They've also, I believe, mostly given us a lot of leeway to do what we needed to do to get us to a point where we can start talking about things like this. And I always tell a friend of mine who's over on the council in Ukippa that I sure hope one day that I get to be a council member that's voting on good things and not just voting on everything we do to try and right the ship here. So I think that this would help to bring the community together, if it's a true community event. And I think when I last talked to you, Mr. Sherwood, you explained that it is going to be involved. You also mentioned something about some of the funding for this. I don't know if you can talk about that, or if that's still...
Yeah, let's go ahead and go with that first.
Okay.
Basically, good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight to get the Pyro Spectacular contract approved. As the city manager explained to you, I reached out to two different firework companies. One of them was out of New York, and I believe it's Zambroni, but I don't actually have their name with me. Reached out twice, they did not respond back. Again, you're looking for a twelve-minute show. They're really not shooting those anymore. Everything usually is twenty-two, twenty-three, even twenty-five-minute productions. This has really come down to a twelve-minute show, old school, which is kind of exciting. We're kind of excited to talk about, have it come back to Beaumont. I talked with Richard Horner from the Fire Department, and they're basically going to be dropping flares in the cannons and shooting old school. So when you come down to a twelve-minute show, it kind of gets a little more exciting. So I think we will enjoy the production that Pyro's offering us. As far as the funding for this program, we were able to save about twelve thousand dollars in the recreation budget and community services. What we were able to do that was to get a lot of donations from the community for the day camp. Expenses have been down in the day camp. So we're going to end up with about that extra in that day camp fund. And the recreation funds are able to pull this out of the community service budget. It really won't affect contingency, it won't affect any other department. We do actually have the twelve thousand in the community service department budget to cover that. If this does get approved tonight, we have reached out, Mark and Knight would kick back in with the Chamber of Commerce. They've guaranteed me that they will use as many nonprofits that want to be involved. There will be commercial vendors out there also, but they will open their doors up to all nonprofits and allow them to come to the event. Raceway Ministries has reached out, and I reached back, and they want to bring their forty-by-forty tent. It's basically a gigantic fellowship tent, kids' activities, adult activities, adult games. It's actually pretty nice. We had them here several years ago. I know they do all the NASCAR races in California, and then they do do certain events. But they've reached out and would like to come back and do the Beaumont July Fourth event. So they've reached out to us. With that in mind, I do have a couple of things about entertainment, but I'd like to bring that back to the first meeting in May, because we do have a couple of different options with that. Again, we have three solid bids from three different companies, two from California, one from Las Vegas. And they all three have reached out wanting to do this program. One has really reached out and almost have given us quite a bit of entertainment just because they want to do it that way. They feel the city has been good to them, and they want to reach back. So I have those three contracts. We'll bring those back in May. Have reached out to a little bit of local stuff, just a lot of them aren't really interested on that day. Like I said, we did discuss the schools, and they're just not. We will reach again out to Dance Spectrum, and maybe we can get a little kid stuff out there to go with it. But that's kind of where we sit. We're looking at a five o'clock start if we can insert this. And in the May, first meeting in May, if we can insert just some lights and sound. We're going to have to have lights out there anyways. You're going to have to have sound out there so we can do a in-house CD to play with the fireworks. It won't be a production from Pyro, so that's where we're saving some of that money. Pyro won't produce that music. We'll produce it in-house. But we're going to have to have a system to play it. So if you're going to bring that system out, you might as well go and throw a few things on that stage because you rented the system. So that's kind of where I'm going with that.
Okay.
Does that kind of answer the questions? We've got the pool. We'll open at noon.
Got a question.
For a dollar, and we'll rock and roll on that.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Roscoe?
I was kind of thinking about this, and I've been talking to a couple of other cities and they've done it. And I know a couple of members of the Economic Development Committee also mentioned it to me, too, as well, that they've seen cities where we can get sponsors. I mean, I know, I would like to recommend tonight, one of the, you know, the donations from the Freedom in Christ Church of the past, you know, maybe kind of putting it towards the fireworks show. But I kind of heard from within, I don't want to throw their name out there yet.
That's fine.
That's, I want to kind of leave that up to you and staff.
Sure.
There are businesses in our community that are willing to sponsor it. If we just, you know, give them, you know, ten minutes, or not ten minutes, but an opportunity in the beginning and an opportunity at the end to announce their name and blah, blah, blah.
Sure.
I mean, they'll pay for the, you know, you get a couple of them advertisements, put their banners up. They'll pay for the whole entire event, and that's been done in other cities as too as well. I just talked to some staff members in Molten Park, and that's how they fund their whole entire, you know, what do you call them? I think what we do, summer concerts.
You can.
And they have different organizations sponsoring them. You know, I know Morongo maybe, Morongo, you know, would probably consider doing something like that and paying for that, so... Have you taken a look at that avenue in terms of getting sponsors?
I've kind of looked at that, but I would, I, and I guess, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think council would need to direct me to go look for sponsors. I'm not going, you know, I've felt out a few people, and they probably would. I think probably, as far as those sponsors go, we would want to look at the entertainment production side. Because actually, the fireworks are already kind of in my budget. Actually, they ended up landing in there. But definitely, I think we would probably need to reach out probably sooner, maybe December. There may be a few businesses in town, council member, and I would be glad to check with them. I did kind of ask the chamber to do that, because I kind of envisioned this as, if we can get this going and get it going at a good level, then, you know, it should be a chamber event.
Yeah, I would like to see the money.
We just kind of step back, and we provide the venue, and we provide some staff help. But, you know, let them, let the nonprofits run this thing, because I know like Lions Clubs do it and other organizations do it.
But I would like to, you know, any of the sponsorships, I would like to go, for that to go directly to the city to pay for the event.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Not into the chamber.
I understand, sure.
You know, I know there's, like I said, I've talked, I mean, that's something that I would like the council to consider because it's twofold. It helps all businesses. It gives them an opportunity. I mean, you're going to have everybody there, and, you know, you give a shout-out, let them hang their banner up. Of course, we get, you know, we let staff choose what's appropriate. We have, you know, guidelines to let them to know, but I think it is twofold for us. It pays for the event, and it advertises our businesses here locally as well, you know, so...
Okay. Any other comments?
I would just, I think those are all good ideas, Councilmember Roscoe. And if that were possible, I think that would be a great idea to give them an opportunity to support the city. I also want to say that I really appreciate your careful stewardship of your budget that left you the money in the budget, so that if we need it, it's there to pay for the event.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. I'm sorry. Okay. I appreciate that. I would also, I like the fact that we're going to include the chamber in this. I think they need the opportunity to work on their budget as well as the city. So I wanted to make sure that they get, they're treated fairly and equitably.
That's kind of why I'm trying to push for a five o'clock start with something going on on the stage, because I don't know if we just shoot fireworks at nine o'clock. I think probably, I don't know if there would be enough to pull for Mark at night.
Okay.
If that. I just don't think you'll get the crowd out there. You may, but...
Thank you.
Okay.
I had a member of the public with a late request to speak.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open public comment.
Dwayne Burke?
Looks like he's ready to donate.
Perfect. That's exactly what I'm up here for. Maybe we could partner together to help you through the program. Love to do that with the chamber, love to do that with the council. So look forward to working with Bob and get our stage out there, maybe get our board to donate some money towards the Pyrotecic and come back to you with all that. I would love to just be partnered with it for the community as a whole.
We'd love to have you as a partner.
Thank you very much.
Put your banner up there and partnership with the... So if we were to, I'm sorry.
I'm going to go ahead and close public comment then, unless you want to come back up again and give some more money, a telephone. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment at 7:28. Thank you very much, Mr. Burke.
So mayor, if I make, before I make an approve, to approve the recommendation, can I add the fact that I would like to have staff take a look at opportunities for sponsorships, like, or partnerships? I like to call them partnerships, because that sounds better. But with partnerships, we can take donations and to be a partner in this program. May I make that into the recommendation at this time? So I'd like to recommend to council for the action to approve purchase order, CSD 2016-8, and approve the contract with the agreement. Also, with a stipulation or modification, I don't know how, I don't want to add that. And having staff find partnerships for the event. I don't know if that came out right, but...
Before I second, I'd like to make a request that you amend your motion. I think that we can give directions to staff to consider partnerships and sponsors. But I don't, I really don't want to vote on it as part of the motion, because I think we need to not go too fast with that. Because I think that we could get into problems if staff is reaching out for a donation or a sponsorship, and then we get ourselves into some kind of, you know, we didn't foresee what was going to happen. So I would prefer that you amend your motion to be just approve the PO, and then we can, as a consensus, provide direction to staff as a separate issue to seek partnerships and sponsorships.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
So I'll second your motion to approve the purchase order.
Okay, so motion by Roscoe and a second by White. Roll call. Roll call, Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton White?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Aye.
That action, that motion carries and brings us to item 3, city attorney report.
So do I have the time make, ask for consensus?
Yeah, I think.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We're looking for consensus to direct staff to look for partnerships.
I personally like to see what's out there, and, you know, if we can make this become a regular annual thing.
I'm good with that.
So it sounds like the director of the council staff was to seek out partnerships.
Yeah, correct.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. So sponsorships and partnerships, yeah.
So we're up to item 3, city attorney report 3A, bond council RFP review committee.
So there was a RFP that went out from the city for bond council services, and I'm requesting that the council appoint one or two council members to review those requests or proposals. This is legal services, so council should be involved in reviewing those RFPs. And I know the way that you did it before was you had a couple of council members that reviewed proposals.
I'm sorry, that reviewed proposals for legal services and made recommendation to the council, and I think that's a good approach. So the request that I'm making is that council appoint one or two council members to review the request for proposals for bond council legal services, and then come back after reviewing them and make a recommendation to council. I'm available to aid and assist those council members that you designate to do that.
Okay. With consensus of council, I'd like to designate the two council members, the councilmember Knight and the council, Mayor Pro Tem White, if you have the time, but they have the time.
Sure, I'd like to do that.
I'd like to do that.
We have consensus of councils?
Yes.
We have consensus of council to designate councilmember Knight and Mayor Pro Tem White to assist you in reviewing the RFP.
Thank you, Your Honor. The other, very briefly, I just wanted to mention that you will have a, the council had requested that we bring to you a resolution directed to the Attorney General's office and also to the Department of Finance requesting that they investigate certain activities by a trustee service provider, and so we'll be coming to you with that on Tuesday. And we looked into the issue of the Department of Finance, and it's not actually the appropriate body to direct it to, so we've modified, we've already prepared the resolution and directed it to the AG, but also to the other correct body rather than the Department of Finance, and so that will be on your agenda for Tuesday.
And who is the other correct body?
It's the California, let me see here. Give me one second.
Okay.
I left him in the other room, but it's, I think it's the California Bureau of Business, and I apologize that I don't have the name of it with me. Yeah, I don't, and I don't want to give you incorrect information, but we have it, and it's already, we've already drafted the resolution, so with the correct entity's name in there.
Okay.
And it was an entity I wasn't, hadn't really, wasn't familiar with.
Okay.
But they are the entity that regulates financial institutions that oversee municipal bond funds.
Thank you for making that effort to make sure we don't send it to the wrong department.
My pleasure. And that's it for this evening. Oh, you know, one other thing I wanted to mention, and I apologize, was that on the report out from closed session on item 2, I'm sorry, item B, which is consideration of appointment employment of city manager pursuant to government code section 54957B, I don't believe the council finished that, and that you're, my understanding is going to go back into closed session at the end of the meeting, and the public is entitled to remain until the end of the meeting when we come back and we report out on just that one item.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so that brings us to item 4, consent calendar.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item A and B.
I move, we don't have any public comments.
Do we have any public comment on any of these items?
No.
You always care to be on that. I'll move to approve item 4C.
I'll second.
Okay, it's a motion by White and a second by Mayor Lara to approve consent calendar 4C. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Aye.
So, okay, we'll come back and take each one of these items individually, so let's start with item 4A, ratification of treatment plan expansion, salt mitigation project RFP.
Questions for our city engineer? Just a quick question. So we're ratifying the RFP here. Are we going to be including in the RFP an attachment of our recent report that we received for the recycling, for the wastewater treatment facility that was done?
My intent is to include that later on. I haven't finished the review of the report. I didn't want to release it without going through. It was a draft report that was submitted, so what should be done is a review done on that, and if there is any discrepancies, any errors corrected, and then we'll be able to issue that either as an addendum or later on, if we select the consultant, we'll provide them that report.
Okay, so that's what I was going to, and then before, it would be put as an addendum to this item. One, the wastewater treatment facility report would come to the council first for its findings, and then if need to be after, like I said, your review, that addendum would come to the council, or that would just go through an addendum through staff?
The report itself is a draft. The final report would come to the council. The addendum we would share because it would, it would help the consultants submit their RFP. So if the intent of the council is to, for me to bring it back prior to issuing it as an addendum, then I'll do that, but normally we would use that draft as long as a complete draft as just informational item.
Is it informational?
Yeah, the report has to be finalized. The draft that we've gotten, we have to review it, provide comments on that, allow board to comment on that, and then once it's finalized, it'll come to the city council for final approval.
Okay. Do you guys know what I'm referring to, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I move we approve item 4A.
I'll second. I'll second that.
A motion by White, second by Roscoe to approve consent calendar 4A item. Roll call, Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes.
That motion carries, so that brings us to item 4B, donation from Freedom in Christ Church of the Past.
And, Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Roscoe?
I just wanted to bring up, I kind of mentioned this in the previous item, item 2F, and that was in regards to maybe down the road, and I know we don't have to take a vote today because it's going into the coffers, but maybe even considering taking that donation and putting it towards the fireworks show. At least we can, you know, one thing that we can do, I think, in return is, you know, let the community know where that donation came from and that, you know, basically you give them props and saying, hey, you know, we want to recognize so and so for, you know, for their contribution and part of the shows, and, you know, maybe that will encourage people down the road to wanting to do the same thing, so.
May I make a comment, Mayor?
Mayor Pro Tem White?
I understand. I think that'd be a nice gesture, but during, at that meeting, I met the gentleman, I don't remember his name, out in the hallway, and I thanked him for it, and I said, you know, we'll try and find something special to do with it. And he made it clear to me that he really didn't want anything special done with it, that he really wanted it just to go to the contribution of, he actually said, the general fund. I don't, and when I talked to him a little bit more, I got the feeling that they weren't really interested in being presented as a, they didn't want to gain anything out of this other than just to show their support for us.
Right.
So I would, I would, I like the recommendation here that the funds are remaining contingency either be earmarked for a special purpose or to be utilized to offset a portion of the deficit. I think that was the intent, at least as it was explained to us in council and as what I heard from the gentleman outside.
That was me. Excuse me.
I agree.
Okay. I think he's going to get used to it.
Either way, so. So I move that we pass item 4B.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem White, second by Mayor Lara to approve consent item 4B. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes.
And with that, at 7:43, we will adjourn back into closed session. Public is welcome to wait for us to report back out.
Can you say that again, please?
Public is.
No, the 7:43 part.
7:43, yes.
It's a record.